All right, we're good to go, Pat.
Wasn't nobody in the waiting room?
Oh, no, I let I let people in from the waiting room.
All right. All right, so. Being Wednesday, February fifteenth at six thirty P M, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'm calling for the planning board. The order. I'm going to read. An old notice that we still believe in regards to the government's. And order suspending certain provisions of the meeting on. Now, general object for thirty eight, section seventeen. Which is by the government's maps, twenty point order imposing strict limitations and remember, people are going to gather in one place. This meeting of the bridge of the planning board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No unpleasant attendance of members will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded. Within forty-eight hours, we'll post a winter recording on the town's website. And our social media pages. I'm Patrick, this is the chair. Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair. Mr. Raymond Jimmian. Misses Aston Roanis. Mr. Stephen Geller. And at some point, we expect our associate member, M J Spadore. During the meeting, our votes will be taken as roll calls. The following bridge of the town staff will also be participating remotely. Mr. Bob Rully, the community economic development director. Mr. Shannon Brian, a town planner. Mr. Greg Tansy. Town engineer. And we expect Mr. Stephen Flory, the building commissioner, to join us all at some point. At this point, everyone's mic is muted. The boards may actually be unmuted through the whole meeting. And this item is prepared on the agenda. The project's representatives might should be unmuted. On the project in public hearing, which we have this evening, and allows a public comment. We asked to use the chat feature to ask a question. I list your name, address, and your question. The host, who's Mr. O'Brien this evening, will recognize the questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And to be unmuted when the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name. And address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Item two on the agenda. We have an executive session at six thirty P M. Now, this meeting. Using regards to the Bridgewater Planning Board, we'll enter into executive session pursuant to N G L. Chapter thirty A, section twenty-one. And suffer construction their D C M. Four forty-nine months. Four forty-four, two thousand and seven. To discuss a strategy, we respect the coming litigation in the case of John P. Walston. As trustee of the Walston Properties Real Trust. For us, Patrick Criscle and all fifty-four grand part. For an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the planning board. And the chair, so declare to seek legal advice of town council. So under item two, if somebody would like to make a motion to go to executive session.
Some move.
Mr. Gall, do a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Mr. Jimmian. Any discussion? Go pick your role. Mr. Gall.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy.
Yes.
And yes. After executive session.
All right, let me. Put everyone in the waiting room.
Could everyone hear me a little better today or not?
Don't far, so good.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, and let me pause there. Wanted to get out of executive session and return to the open session.
Okay, so returning from the executive session, I'll open the continued public hearing. Shane, just remind me at our last meeting, did we go over the public notice and did we receive the green cards?
I believe we received the public, the public notice was on, you read the public notice on the first meeting.
Right, and we did, we did receive the, the about a notification because the green cards.
Uh, we sent those out, yes.
All right, so I'll, I'll open item three. This is a continued public hearing. For, for Zero Jasmine Way, map seventy-two, lot one oh five. This is being proposed by M S F Property Holdings LLC. This is site plan review under section ten point six of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance. This is continued from January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. So again, just to. To recap, because I know we went into executive session. What we'll do is we'll ask the participant to present their project. The board and staff will then ask questions. And then we will open it up for public comment. If you have public comments, just please state your name and address before speaking. So with that being said. Is the representative from the applicant here, would you like to take over?
Yes. So can everybody hear me?
Go ahead, Mr. White.
Perfect. For the record, my name's Josh White. And I'm from J D Civil. We also have Ed Jacobs from P M P. And the applicant, Mike Froney. And Greg Disco from T D Civil is also here as well. And attorney Walter Mariani is also part of our team and he's in attendance as well. So I will start by sharing my screen so I can show the plans.
Allow you to share your screen. All right, all good.
All right, perfect. All right, can everybody see that? All right, perfect. So let's start out. So this, this property is located on Jasmine Way. Map seventy-two, plot one oh five. The existing Cumberland Farms. Property is right here. And there's a car wash. Right here. And this Jasmine Way goes out to Pleasant Street, Route one oh four. So as a property exists right now, it's, it's an existing vacant property with. Giant piles of dirt on it. That's basically the extent of it. It was cleared a number of years ago and it's just been used for storage of material. The existing Jasmine Way, there's a. Edge of pavement that was constructed. And is in use for the surrounding properties. I know there's a doctor's office. Et cetera, that utilize this entrance. This is our sediment control plan. Pending approval, this is. What we're proposing, we've got sediment controls. Ten inch filament on their perimeter. Uh, sediment to watering basin, semi basin in the center of the site, stockpile areas. Temporary construction entrance. All typical stuff for this project. And this is our layout materials plan that shows the three proposed buildings. Two nine thousand square foot buildings and one forty-five hundred square foot building in the center. This is the entrance we're proposing. Twenty-four foot wide. Twenty-four foot wide aisles around all sides of the property. We've got. Parking. In the front buildings. And we're also showing. A space behind each of the. Proposed garage doors. In the, the back of the buildings. We've got two dumpster locations. For these tenants. We've got a landscape. Ten foot wide landscape buffer. Up against. This. Forty B. Residential butter. And then. We've got some concrete walls for grading purposes. Around the back part of the property. And as an easement. That benefits the forty B project. For their drainage of Jasmine way. If they were to use it that way. So just to go over some. General zoning. The properties zones, business B. So this isn't allowed. The proposed use is commercial industrial. There's no tenants in mind at this time. So. One of the. One of the comments that we went through and got from both the town planner and. The. Review engineer, the town engineer. Was regarding the parking. So we have. Updated our. Our calculation. Because the. Proposed use doesn't exactly fall under one of the categories in. The zoning bylaw, so. We've, we just went by the most gross square footage of the building. And we're showing, we've got seventy-two spaces. Fifty-seven outside spaces and fifteen spaces inside the garage, each garage. Unit. Gives us roughly three thirteen. Square feet per parking space. And if we break that down into the fifteen units, it's about just shy of five. Or fifteen hundred square foot unit. This is our grading and drainage plan that we've prepared. Basically, we've got. Two above ground infiltration basins. In the back of the property. Like I said before, there's retaining walls. At the edge of the parking lot. And we've also got another subsurface basin. Under the parking lot here. As you can. As you can read through the. Comment letter that we got from the. Town engineer. It was a very thorough review, so we went through and. Made sure we addressed every single item. And you can. We submitted a revised drainage report. Basically explaining all those changes that we made. So. Peak runoff. Peak rates and volumes are runoff for all met. For all the storms. Groundwater recharge is met. Based on what is required. Same as the. Water quality volume. Requirement and T S S removal requirements as well. We've got several catch basins throughout the parking lot. That'll capture the runoff in the parking lot. And direct it to either one of these above ground basins. And the roof runoff all goes into this chamber system. And the ultimate outlets are down here. And the. All of the riprap sizing outlet. Scour calculations have been provided in the revised drainage report. This is a little. Elevation view of some of the handicap ramps. And sidewalks. In front of the three buildings. As they were a little layout on the site. Building A is the furthest one to the back. Building B is the middle one. And building C is the first one as you enter the property. This is our utility plan. So we're showing a. A six inch. Cement line, duct line, water service. To provide. To provide fire protection to the buildings. We've also got. A sewer main. Connection from each of the units into a main line. That goes to a pump chamber. Which will pump out to the. The street and. There's an existing force main in Route one oh four Pleasant Street. So combining this project with the. The forty B development, which will also have a common force main. That. Both of these force mains will tie into. The force main in Route one oh four. This is the proposed work that we have. Within the Jasmine Way right of way. There's a. Existing eight inch sleeve. From basically the trench stream. That exists in Jasmine Way. Out to. The force main in Route one oh four. Meant for whenever this forty B development or. This local, this, our project. Were to be developed, they wouldn't have to tear up the entire road. To run this force main, they can just. Dig up this portion, put in the. Force main through the sleeve. And make the connection at the end. At Route one oh four. Like I mentioned, we got the review comments from the town engineer. We made a number of revisions regarding this sewer connection. And its coordination with both our project in the future. Forty V development. So what we're showing on this plan is. What we intend in billing a part of this project. And then basically everything else will have to be. Coordinated with the forty B development whenever they. Get to upgrading this roadway because there's. Numerous, numerous conflicts with drainage structures, outlets, hydrants in the middle of the road, stuff like that. That'll all have to be adjusted. So we've got a three, a two inch force main on our property. The. Force main in Jasmine Way will be a three inch. And it'll tie into the, the six inch. In Jasmine Way. We've also got gas and electric services. That'll connect into the existing. There's an existing gas stub. And then the electric service will run all the way out. And this is our landscaping plan that we prepared. You can see the drainage basins out back. We've got a landscape screen proposed. Between our property and the parking lot and the residential butters of the forty P. The dumpsters will be enclosed and screened. With fencing. And the. It doesn't call it out on this plan, but the transformer will also be. Screened from site as well. It gives a, I think that's a pretty good overview. Introduction for this first meeting. Like I mentioned, we've got comments from. The town planner, we have addressed them in a letter that we submitted back to the board. So you guys have that. And as well as the review comments from the town engineer submitted. Responses to all those comments as well, and I believe we've addressed everything. So I think at this time. Take questions from. From anybody.
I just, I have a few questions, just looking at the, the plan quickly. You know, my biggest concern is Jasmine Way. I know some of what we approved, Dr. Curran's office, there's supposed to be some present agreement, there's supposed to be temporary. Big access, like there's supposed to be track out the agreement between Cumberland Farms and Jonathan Morgan, Dr. Curran. You know, how do we ensure that there's going to be adequate access to this? And as the time of the plan, maybe a condition of the Jasmine Way gets constructed? Right, so, my first thought then. You know, my main concern is Jasmine, I mean, probably second, it's captive. And just on the site plan itself. You know, I see. Probably fifty parking spaces on a relatively breaks of trees. And I, I know you say it's not interior, but we have a requirement, I thought. That said, between every twenty spaces, you need a break with a shade tree. And so I'm just, I'm concerned about that. The dumpsters, you know, for fifteen promotional spaces of those two little dumpster areas adequate, potentially. Each one of those units could have their own dumpster, has there been thought for that? And if they did have their own dumpster, what would happen to the space outside and the space inside? And then just those fifteen parking spaces inside, is that realistic? Is that? You know, is that, is that area that cannot be used for? Rental or is that for stores? Is that strictly for parking if you call it, and I can, so. I mean, initially, there's my thoughts, it's going to be the trees, the landscaping. The number of parking spots in a road, this is me inside parking and especially Jasmine Way. I don't know if you want to address any of those, I can, if people ask questions, you can address them off the end.
Um, yeah, I mean, first, the, the. Obvious with Jasmine Way. We've addressed that as best we could. We, it's. Through all the agreements that we've read through. It's not. Our responsibility for this project to. Improve Jasmine Way as part of the, the forty Bs responsibility, so. I don't want to get too much into it, but I think that's. That's how it, that's how the agreement reads. So with the existing. Edge of pavement that is there now. That's. We're showing a temporary entrance just to get to that point. And. Ultimately, this will be the design. Of Jasmine Way once, Jasmine Way, once that's constructed.
I guess my concern is that access to that, that. The access to Jasmine Way, I don't think it was. Built to standards, I think that was just a little temporary access. I'm not sure if that was, you know, if that can handle truck traffic or. That is adequate drainage, I have no idea. And then I, I'd just like to see some sort of agreement or, or something made with the building inspector that. Ensures that Jasmine Way is built out, whether it's, he's not issuing a building, occupancy permits for the houses there, whether you guys have some sort of agreement, but. I just think, you know, most of your frontage is along that cul-de-sac and you get the access from there and. You know, I think it'd be very difficult for trucks to come around, unless they went around the entire building. I just, I think Jasmine Way is critical to this development.
Does anybody else have anything to add to? That regarding Jasmine Way?
Oh.
Randy comments or questions?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I don't, I don't have anything on Jasmine Way, I think Patrick pretty much covered it, so.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, my, my main question was Jasmine Way also. I think that we have to have some sort of. Advice as to how to proceed with it. I had two general questions, though. One, I'm. Looking at the comments from town engineer. I've never seen so many. Corrections that had been made. I'm just curious as to. What went wrong here, if anything did. I mean, is this such a complicated site or does the? Did the applicant simply not understand what was required by this town? And secondly, it seems that there's an awful lot of spec. Commercial buildings going up, and I just question. Why another one? I mean, I see, see them around town that aren't. Close to being filled, and I'm just curious. There has nothing to do with approval of this, I'm just curious as to. What's going on?
Any other comments or questions for the applicant at this point?
Yeah, so, so Mr. Chair, I got some comments on the, on the plans themselves. So as far, as far as the curbing coming into, into your establishment, I'd really like to see that as granite curbing and not just a Cape Cod burn. I just don't think it probably burns really last. Trucks and plows and everything else. Another, another small concern I have is you're, you're plant, you're planting six foot trees fifteen feet apart as a buffer to the forty B. Yeah, you're also saying that that's where your snow storage is going to be, so I don't know how you're really going to be able to achieve that. Without. Killing the trees, especially until they become really mature. The other thing I also have is you. You're calling for fifteen spaces to be rented. And your, your monument sign only has ten on it. And I don't. Not that I really want to, I wouldn't really want to see it, but on your building, I really would not like to see. If you put on doing any type of building signage, I really would not like to see fifteen different styles of sign go across the front of this building. Well, if you did, I think you should come up. With some type of sign standard for your, for your tenants, so they all. Blend nice and look, and look, and look good on the building. And are these the actual colors you plan on for the building? Is a blue roof and blue moldings and?
No.
And I don't see anything about. Lighting for the parking lot.
We did submit a lighting plan.
Yeah, there was a photometric plan submitted with the original application.
Original application.
Because I know we sent some updates a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at your latest, your latest update of drawings, so. I mean, you're not showing any building lighting on your, on your. On your, on your building plans, on your elevations. And I, and I did, and Pat covered the long row of parking spaces without any plantings. And then would you also consider putting any plantings between buildings instead of just grass, another place where you're going to be. Dropping your snow, which is going to kill the grass. Are we even planting at the end of the building?
Yeah, we can look into planting some. Trees in that green space between the buildings and at the end of the building. We can look into that for sure.
Those, those are, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? That we don't require the break up of packing in the site? And that, and that those trees aren't required every twenty spaces? And is it? Pregnant to count interior parking? Of, of these buildings, there's fifteen parking spaces, in your opinion?
I would say that. I, I would say in this situation, I think it's, I think in the way that they've designed it, it's appropriate. Because it's, it's difficult to kind of break this kind of parking up. I think this, this methodology that they're using is a, a quality alternative that doesn't really kind of. Go too off base of the ordinance. So. I think it's fine as presented. So, um, I think it's fine as presented.
Have we determined to see appropriate shea trees to be planted, those screening trees and all counting the K trees and that?
Well, I, I think in the case of this as well, um. One of my biggest concerns about this project, especially with the adjacent forty B, is that if you're trying to create a screening. Um, adjacent to the forty B where the houses are, I, I know the forty B project is. In development and has been in development for the last ten plus years. Uh, and they do have a six-foot fence. Uh, that they are going to propose to border this property. Um. However, being that shade trees this time of year aren't so shady. Uh, I think some sort of coniferous or an arborvitae, uh, a tall. Screening. Arborvitae would be more appropriate along this, these lines, cause. You know, I, I, I just don't, I don't see shade trees ones growing healthily. Um, along this area. I don't, I, I agree with Steve that snow storage doesn't make sense here. Um, if, especially with, um. The, the small spaces in between, but I, I feel like an arborvitae would be more appropriate there, and I think that type of tree, um. Type of species is more appropriate there, uh, along the forty B line. So, yeah, they're referred to as screen trees, not shade trees. But I just wanted to check in with the board if that's inappropriate. Type, I know that they're called, uh. Bad Albert spruces?
Uh, I mean, uh, so I, I guess, I mean, they, the forty B is being constructed on a commercial zone, so there's only so much we can do, but, um.
Yeah, I think the, I think the biggest issue is that you're gonna have, uh, future Bridgewater residents living. Adjacent to the site. And, and I think, uh, just having the proper screening in the board, uh, you know. Having proper screening for the site, I think is, uh, appropriate. But I think the board also just needs to understand is that. There, there has been approvals from a, a different board in town that has. Provided and they have voted to have proper screening along, um, this property, um, the adjacent property. So I just want the board to be aware. The timing on that being built unfortunately is. Based on kind of the scrutiny of a different board, however. That makes it a little difficult.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd also like to, uh, hear from the town engineer as to his, uh, take on the project.
Uh, yes, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. Yeah, I, I did do a very thorough review on this project just because. Of the, um, the density of the project. Um, also because of its proximity to, uh, a forty B project. Which, as you know, is a very high, uh, density settlement, and I, I took a very careful look. At, uh, stormwater impacts, um, just utility layout. Um, also access, access on Jasmine Way. Um, was an important element, um, of my review. Um. The applicant was asked to, um. Produce a topographic plan and an existing conditions plan of Jasmine Way and. And he did, and it revealed a lot of, um, uh, infrastructure that. Um, a lot of us weren't quite aware of. Uh, one, one major contingent. Piece of, um, infrastructure is the outflow, um. Control structure from the detention basin, um, on the, um. Uh, I believe that's the, the Cumberland Farms, or maybe that's the Cow Wash. Um. But there's a detention basin just north of the site, and it has an outflow pipe. And whoever installed that infrastructure. Installed it right in the right of way of Jasmine Way, and there's an outfall. Um, there, and, uh, the applicant did touch upon that a bit. Um, that. Um, infrastructure is gonna have to be. Taken care of and, um, it's gonna have to be piped to a different location. Um, not on the applicant's site, but on, somewhere on the forty B site. And of course. Uh, all kinds of, uh, roadway improvements are gonna have to be made. On Jasmine Way in particular, um, the latter half of Jasmine, Jasmine Way where it fronts the site. Um, you may not be aware, uh, that paving operations took place out there. Last week on the forty B site. And they put the binder course pavement on the development out there on, um, on the forty B site. And they came up, uh, right to the cul-de-sac and they, they paved. Uh, the, the cul-de-sac, this is again binder course. Um, and they have, they have a landscape island that's going in the middle of that cul-de-sac. But even that, even the developer. Uh, of the forty B, he's, he's far from done. Um. Even that cul-de-sac will probably have to have more work done on it. As a result of the full buildout. Uh, and, and roadway improvement of Jasmine Way. Um. I did take a look at, um, most of the comments that, um. The applicant produced, uh, there was, he, he, this is the second submittal. Um, the first submittal I, I commented on. And the applicant responded to my comments and. Over the past few days, I've been going through his, his comments. Uh, many of them have been addressed. Um, I haven't gotten through every, uh, comment. Um. I hope to finish that up this week and get something back to the board. I do have to still review the revised drainage calculations. I did get a chance to review some of them, a few of the calculations. Um, and they, they did respond to what I, um, had requested, so. Uh, there might be a few other questions. Um, I've, I've got a few concerns with, um. The, the low pressure force sanitary main, it's a three-inch main. And it's going to be, and that's a low pressure main, and it's gonna be tied into a six-inch force main. Out on Route one oh four. So, I'm, I've got a, a few, I'm looking into that, I'll, I may have a few questions on that, but. From what I have seen, uh, thus far, the applicant has responded. Um. Uh, favorably to, to many of my, um. Comments of the first review. Um. Snow storage is, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a tricky issue. Um, there's green space to dump it on. But, uh, a- again, if, um. If it starts to, um, adversely impact the landscaping, then. Then the applicant is going to have to, um. All the snow storage off-site. Or find some way of, of managing it adequately. I, I, I did have, um, I did have concerns with, um. Lighting, not necessarily the, the design, but to make sure that the plans. Um, adequately reflect what the lighting design consultant. Intended to do, making sure that the fixtures on the construction plans. Match the light fixture specs, specifications and heights of the, um. Uh, of, of the, um. Uh, uh, the light design, the photometric plan, I should say, that. That specked out these lighting fixtures. The. Uh, photometric plan, it did adequately cover. The parking lot surfaces, uh, with minimal light trespass. Um, they did specify that they, that. They had adhered to dark spec, dark sky requirements, which. I feel is very important to just keep the, um. You know, the, in, in conformity with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods and not. Um. Adversely impact, uh, abutting citizens with, with glare issues. Um, so. Like I said, um. I've been going through the, the comments, I'm probably. About two-thirds, maybe three-quarters of the way through all of my, um, comments and checking the responses and what, what the plans. Had, I've got to generate a, a written report. I still have to go through the stormwater calculations. And I hope to get something back by the end of the week or early next week.
I could, I'll, I can make a comment, Mr. Chair. Uh, I too have not provided the board an updated memo. Um, I did provide a memo as part of my, uh. The initial application where I raised some questions in terms of screening. Um. Addressing the parking based on our, our newest zoning ordinance, uh, thus. Uh, looking at if specific uses were to locate here, uh, whether it be some sort of plumbing or electric operation as typical as some of these. Uh, spec contractor bay buildings are. Um. So just a, a question on the parking spaces, I, I do have some just kind of off-the-cuff remarks that I haven't provided in a memo. Um, some of the spaces that are in the garage door areas, um. I just want to make sure that if there's any spaces that are, uh. Inadequate, uh, cause it looks like some operations are gonna have one space while some are gonna have two. Um, making sure that. Uh, the spaces that can't, won't be confused as parking spaces, so if there's hash marks, just fill the entirety of a non. Uh, accessible space, uh, and additionally too, I want to make sure that, uh, I, I'm just trying to understand the purpose of. Like the ballard locations on the garage store, um, locations as well, um, some are within spaces which would kind of. Or some vehicles to be. Kind of outside that twenty-foot area, um, it would kind of inch out. So I just have some concerns about the ballard locations. I'm in that area, I have no concerns about ballard locations in the front. Um, I understand those locations, but just in the garage door portion of it. Um, so if those could just be adjusted to, for any spaces that are not parking spaces to be either hash marks or. You know, maybe the locations of ballards instead. But other than that, uh, you know, the applicant did address, uh, some. Most of the comments that I did have, um. We do have some questions, yeah, like I said about the finalization of Jasmine Way, but it, it seems like the. Uh, owner of the forty B has made some progress because trying to. Look at the history of Jasmine Way and what it was or what it has become, um, is a big old convoluted process, but, um. It's, uh, very interesting. But, um, that's what I have for now, unless the board, any board members have any questions for me.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, something just came to mind looking at this. Has anybody calculated whether large trucks, eighteen-wheelers? Get around here and back in and not cause trouble for other vehicles moving around?
Is it possible, guys, that you could provide, uh, I wouldn't, maybe not an eighteen-wheeler plan, but maybe a fire truck plan perhaps?
Yeah, we could provide that. Yeah, for sure.
You, you think that's, uh, okay, Ray, uh, for like a fire truck turning plan?
No, uh, the, the, I mean, if there's. These commercial spaces, I mean, I expect some of the units will require deliveries and they could be large trucks.
I, I would suggest you need both. I mean, you're definitely. And I want to make sure that emergency vehicles have the per, the proper radius for turning, but, you know. To raise comment, I mean, if you can show, you know, what an eighteen-wheeler, I mean, you take our largest fire apparatus, it's probably close to, um. An eighteen-wheeler, but I mean, I think it's a fair question to ask.
I remember we, we went, we went through this point at, uh. Another development quite a while back, and I think it's a pertinent question that, uh, should be addressed and. In, in my general comment is, uh. I think a lot of the issues that we're talking about could be addressed by simply a smaller building, but. Uh, that's not gonna happen, I suppose, but I think in all seriousness, I think the truck issue should be.
Yeah, we can, we can get to that plan for sure with both of those.
Chen?
Yep.
So this lot got its frontage off of Jasmine Way, so subdivision was approved by some board. To create the frontage for this lot, is that correct?
There was a subdivision called Gillian Meadows that was approved in two thousand. Six, I believe, could be two thousand four. Um, and then a subsequent A and R plan, um, that created this lot in two thousand six.
So, has this lot been released from the subdivision? Where it's not employed, I mean, I've never seen a board release a lot. That, you know, having been. And, and I, I think this is a good news for the area, I, I just, in my comments, in my comments, I think. You know, the parking's under tight, and I think we have, you know, I'd like to see more screening and.
That's, that's something, that's something I can look into, I can look into, um. If there's any covenants, uh, for this particular property, um, as well as kind of some. Additional information based on kind of the, the, the skimming of this was just kind of the creation of this lot, so I'll do some basic. Heat research on how the lot was created, um. When it was created, but I, I haven't gone anything too far into the covenants, um, so let me look into that. I can get back to you guys at the next meeting.
And if it's, if it's a responsibility of the forty B developer, I just want to make sure the road's done and there's adequate access and. Drops in town safely. You know, I, I think Ray and I looked out of the Dr. Curran building and this came up then. And, you know, there's some issues with potential. Financial issues, I think with that forty B and timing and everything else. And Dr. Curran had his access and his frontage and everything off of Pleasant Street, so we allowed this temporary, you know, basically cut through. Um, with the intent that Jasmine Way would be built now in another project before us and Jasmine Way is. Actually built, uh, or whatever it is now, so I, I just want to make sure that. You know, that, that whoever is responsible, it sounds like it's the forty B developer that's, gets us done, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe the answer isn't to. Put it on this developer, but. Maybe Mr. Solari, you know, has told them already that he won't release an occupancy permit until this is fully done. And I just, I think the board should know that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe Mr. Solari has, we've had conversations with respect to the forty B. Think he has advised the developer of the forty B that there will be no COs issued until. You know, all the road improvements and infrastructure improvements are done, but, you know, I absolutely agree with you that. We, we need to look at some kind of enforcement to make sure that that project is completed. As approved in a timely manner, or, you know, legally look at what options the town has to. Either make sure it happens or take another course of action.
Um. Mr. Dressel, can I again ask follow-up question? I'm, I'm just curious, looking at this plan, where are deliveries gonna be made?
I would say to the rear of the building, um. We don't anticipate, uh, eighteen-wheeler type trucks, but, you know. Box type trucks like, uh, FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, those types of.
Those bases in the rear of the building are for delivery or for whom?
Uh, well, for, for parking for the, uh, for the tenants and it's also garage door there. Uh, well, for for parking for the uh for the tenants and it's also garage door there, and if these tenants um are in and out of the garage. They'll be using that space for loading.
So though the the rear of the building will have two garage doors, all the. Spots, correct?
Yep, um, that's how it's proposed, there may be a tenant that comes in that doesn't. You know, that that uh. That needs, you know, to get in and park, that's we're anticipating, um. So that's why we've included garage doors along all the backs and.
Well, the garage doors make sense, but are we counting those those spaces as required parking spaces?
In our parking calc, we currently. Counting the spaces as a garages as parking spaces, correct, that's what's in our zoning table.
Is that the proper shot?
I would, I would leave that up to our our zoning enforcement officer, based on my. Reese, just the question that I had was that I brought up as part of my memo that more parking spaces would be required as. The applicant had uh based their parking on the original uh the zoning ordinance. Um, prior to this latest one, um, but based on the current. Uh zoning ordinance, the applicant had to provide substantially a lot more parking spaces. As I believe it is based on, let me just pull up the plan. This, I think it is. Based on the gross floor area, so um. So it was divided, I think it was thirteen spice. I think it was seventy two spaces where the original plan um only showed forty, I believe.
Well, I think we need clarification on that.
Well, uh, Mister Tanzi did bring this up as well in his letter, and a response to that, I could read through our response to to his comments, um. At the cap applicant uh does not currently have specific tenants for the project. Uh, they are wherever targeting uses for the specific um parking codes that Mister Tanzi noted uh in his comments. Um. And the table use regulations, um, some of the parkings are codes are designated as N A, um, like warehouse is. Um. Also, each potential tenant requires a building permit for their build out of their space, so parking space will can be allocated. Per the tenant as they come along and what their uses. Um, in addition, the parking layout of the proposed site has been revised in more exterior spaces having added and interior. Garage spaces provided, total parking spaces provided on the site has increased. To fifty seven exterior spaces and fifteen garage spaces as shown on the table that Josh just had up, totaling seventy two spaces. And it results in a per unit breakdown of four point eight spaces per unit. Um. Space per unit number is just provide is provided in order to give more context into the uh the parking provider on site, so. Um, not having any specific tenants identified right now, um, we can't really. Base it off of uh those uses, but we know there are specific uses. Um, that will be looking at this property in these these and renting in this development.
So based on parking code J of our uh. Our uses, that's a one space for three hundred square feet. A gross square feet, and that would include, I think this is what we use as an example. Uh, to to to. An automobile repair shop provided that all work is carried out in the building. As well as um industrial wholesale and transportation uses. Which includes light manufacturing in a plumbing, electrical carpentry shop or other similar service repair establishments conducted entirely within a building. With no more than five employees at one time, so that's where one of the numbers came from. Um, so just based on kind of what we're looking at, and the issue that we're facing here is that. Without knowledge of each use in the building, the parking number may fluctuate. Uh, until that information is ripened out, but you don't know who's going to be in there until. You know, someone occupies the space, so I they're being overly abundantly cautious with their numbers. Um, but they may have more parking than they necessarily need. Um, but that's, that's them basing it on this parking code J. That has typical uses within the contractor base, or what we've seen from contractor base.
And two questions. No office space proposals, this is just strictly. Where I was saying, there's no front offices in these buildings that would require different parking zone.
Uh, I didn't see, I didn't see any interior layout, so I can't make that determination. I'm assuming it's a typical contractor bay where you walk in, there's an office, there's a restroom, and then it leads to the garage area.
And if there are offices, would that change the parking or would that not?
Um. That's a, that's. I it is something I would have to look into, Mister Chair.
The other question is, is this, why does this building not require two loading spaces, are they asking for?
Terms of loading areas?
Yeah, based on the square footage of the project, which you require to loading areas, correct?
I believe so.
Is that identified somewhere on the plan that I'm just missing or?
I do not believe there is a specific loading area placed on the plan.
That's something we can add.
If I can clarify the parking spaces in the back of the building, the doors are only twelve feet wide. Garage doors. Units are twenty five feet wide, so what we can do is restripe that. And not show the spaces right in front of the doors, there's plenty of room to have the garage door and a parking space, parking space ten feet wide. The uh doors twelve feet wide, that's twenty two and a twenty five foot unit, so we can restripe that, so it makes more sense. Here we'll have a building plan, elevation plan that shows the back of the building that will show how that would be striped with the doors.
And we could designate the area in front of the garage doors as as loading spaces.
Yeah, we can put stripes there and have the park space being decided. Okay, and we'll have, well, the plan that reflects that at the next meeting. Both of of plan new and an elevation new.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
I just like, uh, again, just the clarification of how, what is the distance between the front of the building and the striping for the parking space?
There's a five foot wide walkway and then twenty four foot wide um drive aisle.
I'm sorry, I I didn't hear you.
There's a five foot wide sidewalk along the buildings and then twenty four foot wide um travel way.
Twenty four feet?
Yep, so that'd be twenty nine feet. From the parking spot to the building.
Alright, so just, one, one more, if you have more, if you have more, but um. It's a public hearing, so there may be some members of the public that would like to comment on the project. If there are any members of the public, um, please identify yourself either by raising your hand. And they can also in the chat.
Virtual hands raised, nor do I see anyone in the chat. So I do not see anyone. Looking to speak on behalf or. Against this project.
So Shane, just just to the front of the building again, you know, the forty fifty parking spaces, you know, is there a reason we don't want, I mean. Don't you think it would look a lot better without parking broken up like we require in the zoning? Every twenty spaces have peninsula, so to speak.
Yeah, if the board wants to ask it that way, I I'm just thinking logistically speaking in terms of this site, I think that um. In terms of what they're trying to do here, you know, they, and additionally with the drainage easement, it kind of creates a little bit of a hardship. Um, to do that, especially with the amount of parking spaces for the site, um, but like.
I think, I mean, it would also help the screening over time, right, because you have the ten, you only have the ten foot wide landscape buffer. You you know, ten, ten foot wide, those trees are going to be overhanging in the parking lot if they're loose roosters, so I mean. I just, I think that if we can build some islands in there, some peninsulas and add some shade trees, that would help the screening as well.
I think it's, I think it's possible, I thi- I think the issue that they have is the van accessible spaces, that would be probably ideally where you would put those. Screen tree areas. Um, and they're also probably the most ideal locations for van spaces. Um. Maybe on the AD accessibility.
Maybe the race points, it's just max, I mean, again, I just, I I'd like them to demonstrate that those dumpster areas are adequate too, I'm kind of.
Yeah, I think that the the dumpster tucked away in the corner might not be an issue, and they show kind of the curve over there. Um, but I don't know about the other one to the left, that might be a. Tougher cell after they do their turning gradient there.
Yeah, I said, I mean, I just want to make sure Jasmine Way gets done, that's properly screened and looks good, that's all.
Sure thing.
I don't know, any other board comments at this point? Any other staff comments? Any public comments? So at this time, I mean, we'll give them some feedback, we have to have Mister Tanzi continue his review, Shane provide us with a memo. Um. Do you want to continue this to the next meeting, if you have more input for the um developers and representatives?
Just for timing purposes, the the next two meetings for the planning board are the March first meeting as well as the March fifteenth meeting.
We want to try and keep this on track for the developer and doing the maintenance.
I guess that'd be up to them, what amount of time they think they need, um, to be honest, it sounds more like a. Like a month long revision, that's that's their fault to make, not mine. I would just hate to put it on the first and then just continue it again.
I I would agree, it seems that there there are a lot of, uh, I don't know, minor, major issues that should be resolved, in particular Jasmine Way, uh. I think putting it off for a month would be wise.
Mister Brian, do you think you're going to address those issues, Jasmine Way and lot releases and all that stuff in the next two weeks, so what's your preference?
Yeah, I can, I can send out some memorandums to the board, I I would just kind of. Uh, probably reach out to the applicant, see if it does uh a month seem appropriate for you guys, Josh?
I think, I think so, just wait, once we get the comments from you and uh. And Greg for giving us time to review them, make the changes and get them back to you in time, I think. It kind of makes sense to push it up. Ed, does that sound good with Mike?
Yes, we're on board.
Love to hear.
You know, maybe, you know, I know, you know, the goal is to maximize the site for the developer, but to make everything work, if we're going to. Shrink the size of one of the buildings a little bit or something, you know, maybe that's an option too, so. But if it works, it works, so. Alright, um. Do we have an a motion to continue this, if there's no more discussion to March first, that uh, excuse me, March fifteenth to six thirty?
So we're in promotion.
So, motion by Mister McDonald, is that a second, Mister Jimmy?
Yeah, it's a second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll take the one speaking off.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Mister.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, it's continued to March fifteenth and six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
You.
Cheers, everyone, have a good night.
Next up on the agenda, um, item four. This is Old Nelson Estates, this is a lot release and a surety request for the final lot. Mister Tanzi? Or Mister LeBron, Mister Tanzi?
I I'll, I'll just kind of briefly. Do a memo, um, so the applicants before the board, um, for a request, Mister Costa could not be here. Um, today, um, he let me know today. Um, so it's a request for the final lot to be released from covenant, um, for the old north estates, AKA Westwood Lane. As is now known as, uh, so the applicant uh came before the board in August of twenty twenty two for a lot release request. Where that surety request was of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety seven dollars. So a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ninety seven dollars, so the applicants completed additional work to the road. Um, in the subdivision where um Greg is the our town engineer has provided an updated surety requirement uh for completed work. As ninety three thousand dollars, five hundred ninety three thousand, five hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty cents. And then he has provided a breakdown of the work to be provided, and this amounts includes the electric work that needs to be placed underground, because we've had. Many discussions with Mister Costa, uh, post that uh August twenty twenty two meeting. Where there were poles that were placed above ground, he said that he is working on getting a transformer and placing those underground, so those numbers have been. Included in the subsequent uh. Uh, changes as well, so, but there's additional items that uh Mister Costa has to work through as well through this process, uh, through the decision. Um, that would be required prior to building permits and their certificate of occupancy, so that's just. This number is just solely based on uh that lot release and for the work to be completed. I'm happy to pass it over to Greg.
Thank you, Shane. So, I went out there, I didn't in inspection and. The tele, the the overhead electric is still up, he said he had, um. You know, already paid to have the work done and he's waiting on the. Transfer former and and so forth, and he has to reset. Uh, a new pole, but I could not give him any credit for that work. Because it hasn't been installed, he claims he has paid for it, that's fine, but until it gets installed, I. I couldn't give him credit for it, um, he did do some work out on. The uh, the stormwater system, he's got about seventy five percent of it complete. So, my um, my new bond release estimate uh reflects those changes. Um, there's still going to be some surveying, um, and as-built drawings that he's going going to have to. Provide, he has to uh still provide planting. Um, I mean, it's not the time of year to do planting now, so again, that's reflective. Uh, that money is is withheld. And is reflective in the new uh bond estimate. Um. As-built plans, miscellaneous seeding.
Uh. Why you're in that area is. ADA sidewalks for three thousand. This neighborhood doesn't have any sidewalks, is that at the intersection or something?
It's, um. There there's a, there is a little bit of a sidewalk on on each side with a, will ramp down. Uh, across the the roadway and then ramp up, it's, um. They they did, they did pave that. Um, the the ramps in there with binder course, it's a temporary ramp just to. Get pedestrians across the um, the opening of of the roadway as it opens up onto North Street.
Okay, so 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 those are at the intersection, because there's no sidewalks along that one to full out subdivision, correct?
Oh, uh, no, not not on on the um subdivision road itself, no.
Those are where Old North Estates meets North Street, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, because it would break up the the cur sidewalk that's currently there, so ideally, they would have to create ADA accessibility to maintain that. Accessibility between um. Existing sidewalk, so we don't have a gap.
I'm going to interrupt, but I continue, I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
So, uh, it, there's not a whole lot more left to be done out there. Um, my bond estimate. Um. Yeah, they do, and, and they have to, um. Install a few street bounds. Some, uh, in some lot markers which are somewhat minimal because there's only two lots in the subdivision. And that, that. Um. That's pretty much. Everything. Um, yeah, miscellaneous seeding. Some water gates, some valve boxes. Just bringing them to grade.
So you're looking for us to approve ninety-three thousand nine, uh, five ninety-eight fifty bond amount?
Right, to retain that.
I, I have a question that. Greg, um, I, I drive by there a lot and I noticed. Obviously, the poles are still up. There's also, it looks like a, some sort of drainage ditch near the road that runs along parallel to the road. And I was, I was curious that if you put the. Wires underground, is that going to impact? That ditch, whatever it's for, you know, I'm referring to?
Yes, those are, tho- that's the stormwater management system and they do. They do look like ditches essentially. Uh, they are. They're, they're long skinny, um. Infiltration basins. Uh, and they have stone, stone lining underneath them. But there is a shoulder between.
Yeah, I just wonder whether it's wide enough. That's all.
Yeah, it, it's gonna be close. They're gonna have to box it. Um.
Well, the oth- the other thing too is those are probably too wide right now and those aren't filled in yet. I mean, those structures are all about, uh, out of the ground.
Well, which, which structures?
Well, it looks, it looks like that's way too deep. It looks like they have to bring the elevation of that, the tension basin up. If you, if you look at those, if you look, if you, if you drive by, those structures are out of the ground more than, more than they need to be at this point.
Well, we did go out there and we did shoot the, the grades of those structures. They do have to do some miscellaneous grading on the, um. Guess it would be the, uh, the south side. Of, uh. The, um. The drainage structures. There, there's gonna be, there will have to be some great adjustments. Performed out there. Um. That would be done after they get the electric line. In along the side of the road.
I, I guess, uh, my, my main concern is that electric line. Uh, you're saying that what the amount that you're proposing will cover that electric line. Um, it, it seems to me, I, I forgot when this came up, but it's been quite a while. I would have thought that the electric line would be in by now. Um, that's my concern.
Yeah, um. You know.
Great. I think Shane and I, I think Shane has talked from two. I bumped into Eric a few times. I guess the issue is, is. You know, once you realize they had to do the undergrounds, um, utilities. National Grid had to order a big transformer and I think that's. Kind of the supply chain. You know, issue right now, so. I, I think at some point Shane write a letter to the board, ask, basically tell us, really, I can see part of them.
Well, origi- yeah, originally he wanted to come to say that he wants to, he wanted to keep it. Um, then the board made that determination it would be a major modification. So he said he was going to. Uh, eventually just take it out and go underground and rather than go through that entire process, so. Um, he's made that, uh, clear rather than us. Uh, try to rescind a subdivision by having it be out of compliance.
And when, when was that? When was that, Shane? Huh? How, how long ago was that? That was quite a while.
October, November.
Oh, I thought it was earlier than that.
Uh, Aug- well, August was when, like I said, August twenty twenty-two was when. He asked for the lot release with that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So he's done. Fair amount. It, it sounds like seventy thousand dollars worth of work on the road, um, but. Nothing towards the electrical portion of it, so.
So we're talking at least four months that's been.
Since the last conv- well, I've, I've had, I'll have like bi-weekly conversations with Eric. Um, but he, he's kind of gave me a timeline that he's hoping that it'll be coming sooner than later. I, I think he said that he's hoping to get this all taken care of by. Um, the spring. So, um, but we still have that ability to. You know. Bring them back in, um. As part of this and as well as with the release of the second lot to hold a certain amount of money to make sure that work is completed.
Hey.
Any other discussion before we consider the amount that Mr. Tansy has presented? Mr. Jimmy, you will say?
I'm all set. As long as that, that amount's, uh, rational and it's fine with me.
Alright, so do we have?
Oh, sure. And I just wanna know, I, I'm gonna need, um. Uh, three board members to come in and sign this, so. What I should remind the board is that the board did come in and sign, uh. Oh, bless you. Uh, the August third, uh, after the August third meeting, the twenty twenty lot release request. So that was an actual lot release request that was notarized. However. Mr. Costa never gave us a check. So we never gave him the lot release. So that piece of paper is what he'll take. To the registry of deeds and the clerk's office and they'll all have a copy of it. So I'll be, um, creating a new lot release form. That would need, um, planning board members to come in. I'll have it notarized and then when, once Mr. Costa provides that check. Um, he would be provided that lot release, um, as to. You know, go get a permit or whatever he would like to do with it. So I'll send healthy reminders once some, that sheet is complete.
So we have a bond number in front of us, ninety-three thousand, five ninety-eight fifty. Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve that charity amount?
I'll make the motion.
Bye, Mr. Jimmy. Do we have a second?
I can second.
Bye, Miss Ross. Any discussion? Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Your next item on the agenda. I know Shane, item five, we're just keeping here as a place holder so we don't forget about it. Uh, playing subdivision rules and regs. Um, do you wanna talk about this tonight or do you wanna push it to the next meeting?
Um, I'll do a brief conversation, uh, we'll have a brief conversation. Um, so I'm still reaching out, uh, across to the departments, having conversations. Um, about some improvements we can make to our subdivision rules and regs. Um. One of the ones that I took from the last meeting that we discussed was the changes in sidewalk, uh. As you can tell, a lot of applicants like to come in with the concrete berm. And, you know, but that's kind of the expectations that we have for certain projects. So we wanna make sure that, um, for subdivisions for more as our subdivision rules and regs require. Um, that we're looking for vertical granite curbing. And if someone doesn't wanna do that, then they come in with that waiver request. So we, we wanna kind of add that. We wanna create that higher standard for what we expect. And then if people want to waive those standards, they can do so, um. So that's been added. As well as a. By comments from DPW, um, from their meeting, I think we had about. Two months ago, have been included as well, which correlate to the, uh, stormwater ordinance changes. Um, and then there's been some subsequent changes based on the. Zoning ordinance updates as of recent. So, um, that's what I have for now, um, but I'm hoping to go more into depth, uh, at the March first meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Tansy on that? Okay.
Can I just make a suggestion? I, I think what, uh, Shane is doing is obviously important. Maybe we can, uh. Take, uh, a couple of your recommendations at each meeting and try to make a decision on them and just, and not, instead of trying to do it all at once. I'm not sure whether that would work or not, but. Just a thought.
Which, whichever, I, I would. Yeah, whichever you guys prefer, um. If you guys have any comments specific to certain things that you'd like to see quicker than, sooner than later. Like I said, it just requires a public meeting of the planning board and placed on an agenda for these updates to me.
Well, maybe if we're gonna do it, uh, with a public meeting and ma- make it, uh, do it all once, maybe we need to set aside most of one meeting for it instead of having other items on the agenda.
I wish it were that easy, right? Do you guys wanna have a special meeting? We've got, we've got some busy, uh.
How you're really pushing it, Shane.
I, I know. I know these are important, but.
I'm just kidding.
So, um, I'm, I'm hoping to get a, a nice thorough update by March first and then from March first, after kind of diving in a little bit more. Um, get it on for probably the. Well, we only have one meeting in April, so I'm hoping that we can get a vote for April if that's fine with the board.
I mean, if a special meeting is appropriate for that, I'd, I'd, I'd be okay with that personally.
Yeah, that's fine, if you guys wanna have.
I would too. It is important. I think we shouldn't, we, I, I, all I'm saying is I don't think we should just sort of. Talk about it at the ta- at the end of a meeting and it's, it's important enough to spend, you know, set aside a good amount of time for it, that's all.
All right, maybe we look at, um, probably April. Fifth, as long as there's no holidays at that time, April fifth or maybe. March twenty-ninth. We'll look at one of those too. So I'll, I'll have a, a date and time for a special meeting to go over the subdivision rules and regs and we can. Do a. Package approval that day.
All right, item six, uh, the business. So. I know the rules and if you wanted to come to the not first meeting, is that appropriate? You know, based on what we have on the schedule? Is that where you perform this role?
I, I don't wanna clutter your agenda, but, you know, I did do. Presentation similar to what I did to the planning board last week to. Uh, the town council. You know, we wanna continue to move forward with, uh. All the things we've discussed, so, I mean, I, I'd like to do it sooner than later, but if the agenda. Or the first March meeting is too cluttered, we can do it at the second meeting, but. Uh, that's up to you all as members.
Um, Shane, what do, what do we have on that meeting?
We have a, a new site plan review, um, for one forty-five Winter Street. I believe I've sent those, uh. That project out to the board already. Um, they, it's very similar to Jasmine Way being contractor base. Um, so it'll be one forty-five, uh, Winter Street, um, but, uh, we have space after that for, uh. Bob to provide a presentation in an overview of form-based code. Um, and then after that, just kind of given up a brief update of subdivision rules and regs. Um, so I, I'm hoping it's not too convoluted.
Yes, I mean, I, I, I agree, Bob. I'd like to keep it moving. I'm really something. Is that okay, everybody to schedule Mr. William, his discussion for the first and last just to keep the heat on track? All right, any board committee reports? Any planner reports?
Um, other than, you know, like I said, uh, I think at the last meeting, uh, the CPTC Planning Conference. Um, is Saint Patrick's Day weekend, um. They'll have some more information soon, but it's on, uh, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. They haven't held in person. For four years. So if anyone's interested in partaking, um, it's over in Worcester. So if you guys are interested in partaking that, please let us know. Um, anything else do I have?
And can I just add that, uh? You know. Some of you may or may not be aware that Steve Sobel, who is our environmental planner. Has submitted his letter of resignation effective, uh, two twenty-eight. Uh, so we have posted, uh. A job opening. We've kind of reconstituted that to be an assistant planner. Um, in my opinion, we don't need a full-time environmental planner. I think that getting some assistance to help Shane. And myself as we go forward with some of these new initiatives. Is more appropriate in the interim. Uh, we will cover the Conservation Commission and some of the environmental issues, but. If you didn't know, I just wanted you all to know that that was happening.
I didn't realize.
I didn't know either, so thanks for the update.
Yeah. I, I actually have one thing, uh. Pat, um, just, just FYI, the, um. Yeah, a while back, the, uh, town manager, um, Michael recommended that the. Tree committee, uh, look at the shade tree ordinances to, and update it. And, uh, Bill Malpe, the tree warden, and at the last meeting we had, which was Tuesday. Said it, it's, uh. It may need to be rewritten completely and I did pass it on to the town manager and he, he agrees. So, uh, at some point, you're gonna probably see a proposal for. A, uh, new shade tree ordinance that, that we have right now. That's it.
Right, is that in zoning or is that a general?
Pardon me?
Is that a zoning ordinance or a general?
No, it's not zoning. It's, it's, it's in the code, I think.
Yeah, it's in the town code.
Yeah.
That wouldn't even technically come to us, correct?
No, I don't think it would.
No, I don't think there's anything that would.
I think it's, it's just console.
Any other reports? If not, do you motion to adjourn?
Oh, let's stick around and talk some more. No, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Bob, are these meetings too long? A painful feeling they are.
This, this is actually, you know, this is much easier than what I'm used to in the past, so this is all good.
They, it's, wait, wait, Bob, wait.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, I've, I've been doing this a long time. I mean, we're not even till eleven o'clock yet.
Well, I think, I think the idea is right. If Shane does a good job and. Greg and you do a good job and we have all the info, it should be pretty, you're right.
I mean, I, I will say this and then what you can adjourn is that, you know, I, I think. Two points. Very fortunate to have Shane. I mean, he's incredible and, you know, I'm grateful to have him. Also, you know, in terms of Greg's contributions. You know, I think some people might think that he's giving too much information. My feeling is you can never give too much information. So I think in both cases. That the town and this board and other boards are very fortunate to have the resources that we have available to us and the competency. You know, that goes along with those resources, so, uh, I, I, we're in good shape.
And I would like to compliment Steve Solari, the building inspector, because we talk every day. And not a lot of building inspectors do that.
I, I will echo what Shane just said with respect to Mr. Solari.
Well, if I, I may now. I mean, I think that somebody like myself who. Has degrees in history. Being on a planning board, um, is obviously daunting in, in many respects and. And it would be extremely difficult if we didn't have people like yourselves to, to help. I mean, I base my judgment on what you guys. Say, and usually, and, and that, and that's important. I mean, I, I think you're all great, really do.
You know, Ray, I actually had a follow-up question, um. Related to the, uh, the, the tree, tree board, tree council, uh. I, I forget where I read it, but. I heard that there's a kind of a push to move away from fruiting trees. It's like shade trees or tree trees. Is that, is that accurate?
No. No.
Okay, alright, good. I don't remember where I read that.
In, in fact, what we have and, uh, Josh. Is going to probably put it on the town website, um. Um, Paul, the cost of, um, DBW, uh, happened to talk to the. The, um. Arborist for National Grid. And I guess he's very good and, um, the arborist, uh, gave Paul, which we now have. The, uh, three or four page, um, write up as, as how National Grid trims trees. So it, it's, 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 I think it's good for everybody to look at and it's a very detailed analysis of what, what they. Decide to do and how they do it in terms of keeping the wires clear. And that's gonna go up on the, uh, website, so. We're getting there.
I, I don't wanna rain on anybody's parade. But I can tell you, based on my experience in Rhode Island. That National Grid hacks trees. They are not. Sensitive to. Being good arborist. Um, it might be different in Massachusetts.
No, no. That, that's, that's our feeling too. And, and, and Paul was pleasantly surprised with talking to this guy. And anyway, we have in theory what they, they do, whether reality is a different thing or not, then we'll see.
I believe we had a motion on the floor that didn't, wasn't seconded for adjournment.
I don't think, I don't think anybody wants to leave. Did we have a motion to return?
I made a motion.
You made, do we have a second?
Now we can have a discussion.
Who made the second, Mr. Geller?
I did, yes.
No second?
Discussion on, discussion on the motion.
Do we wanna discuss adjournment? Mr. Geller? Bye, everybody. Bye, everybody. Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I guess so.
Ross?
Yes.
Let me guess. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.